All the meeting to order. Welcome to January 13th, 2022, meeting in the Gaston County Board of Education. I'm Jeff Ramsey, Member at Large and Chairman of the Board. At this time, I would ask the other members of our board to introduce themselves. Mr. Dedman?
Lee Dedman, Gastonia Township.
Justin Davis, South Point Township.
Robbie Lovelace, Cherryville Township.
Doc Guthrie, Gastonia Township.
Doc Cherry, at Large Member.
Kevin Collier, Riverbend Township.
Brent Moore, Crowthers Mountain Township.
Okay. On behalf of the Board, I would like to welcome everyone to our meeting this afternoon, and thank you for your interest in Gaston County Schools. You can say our regular meeting is on third Monday each month, but with Martin Luther King holidays, we decided to schedule it for today. Our first order of business is to have our prayer and pledge of allegiance to the flag. I would like to ask Dr. Booker to lead our invocation and pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Before we have our invocation this afternoon, I'd like to ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence as we acknowledge the life and legacy of three people who had a profound, very profound influence on public education here in Gaston County. We are saddened to learn of the passing of Bill Seabrook, George McSwain, and Ken Ratchford, all of whom gave many years of service to Gaston County Schools. We offer our condolences to the families of those three individuals. Many of you know Bill Seabrook. He was a man that lived a professional life and then lived a public service life. He was a loyal member of this Board of Education, and while he was no longer a member after he served as Chair, he continued to be very active in the schools and supporting our public schools. Mr. Ratchford served as Assistant Superintendent in addition to a number of positions in his long career in Gaston County Schools. And finally, Dr. McSwain served as Superintendent of Gaston County Schools in the 1980s. So I just think it's proper for us to pause for a moment and remember Bill Seabrook, Ken Ratchford, and George McSwain. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Dear God, we thank you for the lives of Bill Seabrook, Ken Ratchford, and George McSwain. The work they have done will live on and make their lives live forever. We acknowledge your amazing power and the work you do in our lives. We thank you for goodness and for your blessings over us. We think that you're able to bring hope even in the toughest of times. We ask for your provision for those who have suffered through storms as these storms that are bearing down on us come again to those hard-hit areas. Strengthen us for your purposes with your great love and care. We thank you for your mercy and your grace, and that you are always with us and never leave us. Help us to set our eyes and hearts on you. Strengthen our confidence in who you have made us to be. Set us free from comparison so that we can work together efficiently. Renewing our spirits, fill us with your peace and joy. We love you, Lord, and we need you. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as those lives who will be affected by the actions today. Ready us to make every moment count. We praise you, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under our invisible and liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business is adopt the agenda. You have the proposed agenda before you. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda? Ms. Cherry makes the motion second by Mr. Dedman. Any discussion? All in favor? And it's unanimous. The agenda is adopted. Our next order of business is to hear the good news happening in our school system. Dr. Booker shares some good news.
Thank you. Appreciate this opportunity. I want to start with that every January across the country, school boards are recognized. And we want to thank you for your service and know that traditionally, we at the Board Retreat will have some form of recognition. But today, as we're here together and on TV, I wanted to just thank you for your service and all that you do on behalf of the students of Gaston County. Next, we have an exciting recognition. It's our Do the Right Thing winners. And those winners for January are Seth Lehman of New Hope Elementary, Alasham McCorkle of Rankin Elementary, Lenisha Lindsay of Greer Middle, and Kayden Beaver of Cherville High School. We are this year with our Do the Right Thing program, recognizing these folks on a monthly basis, and we will end with a celebration in the spring, recognizing all of them at one time. We are extremely excited to say we have another Quest Bridge Scholarship recipient. You see here on the screen, a Holland School of Technology student, Jana Brooks, who has chosen to receive this prestigious award, and she will be attending Rice University in Houston, Texas.
Wow, that's great.
And what is significant about this, this scholarship is a full scholarship with a value in excess of $200,000. So we are excited for her and with the future how it holds for her. The Gaston County, as an organization, celebrated their 175th anniversary in a special ceremony at the courthouse, and they had a poetry contest for that. And one of the winners was our very own Mason Powers of John Chavis Middle School. He came to the celebration, read his poem, and received a special award for his winning entry. And we wanted to recognize Mason for his work. And also, you all should know that you had a colleague there who was one of the speakers on the podium that day, our own Doc Guthrie, who on behalf of the African American Museum is presenting a quilt that can tour the county of the history of our great county. And so that was a neat event to be a part of, and we are excited for Mason, as well as what Doc Guthrie added to the presentation. Many of you know Michelle Ellis and the great work she has done since she had joined Gaston County Schools, and she currently is serving us as a science teacher at Hunter Huss High School. She is one of the few educators, there were only three in the whole state, to receive the North Carolina Attorney General's Dogwood Award. And we are excited for her and all the work that she does, because this award recognizes people who are contributing to their communities. And Ms. Ellis is a great contributor to our community, but in particular to Gaston County Schools. And so we congratulate her for that award. We have a long history in our district of having national board-certified teachers. And on the screen here, we have our four most recent educators to earn it. Erica Halls of Bessmer City High School, Amanda Matts of North Belmont Elementary, Kelly Royston of Stuart W. Kramer, and Catherine Watts of Southwest Middle School. In addition to these four ladies, we had 14 teachers renew their national certification, which is required every 10 years. So we would like to pause and just say congratulations to these four, but also to all of our nationally certified teachers and the work that they do to maintain that designation. And these pictures are just representative samples of what our students have done in the recent months in organizing and contributing to many different food drives that are sponsored throughout our community. Thousands, literally, of food items have been distributed to our community through collections that have been done by our students, through various clubs, elementary schools with competitions between each other. It's just a neat part of the total student learning experience, and where they begin to understand their role in the community and ability to serve in their community. So we appreciate the spirit of caring and giving that is present in our schools. And Mr. Chairman, that is the good news I would share this afternoon.
Yes, Ms. Guthrie.
Dr. Booker, you always bring us good news. You always bring us progressive teachers who are dedicating their time and their services to make a difference in Gaston, and we greatly appreciate that. I did see in the newspaper this morning, a teacher, I think from Cosner Elementary School, the Exceptional Teachers Program, who enjoys her work as well. We are just so blessed to have so many dedicated educators in our county, and we thank you for sharing that with us each month.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. The next item on the agenda allows the opportunity for public expressions. This is a time when the Board will hear comments from citizens about the matters of public concern related to the school system. We do have several individuals who have signed up prior to the beginning of this meeting. Our Board policy sets aside the first 30 minutes of our regular monthly meeting for citizens to address the Board. Before we hear from the public, let me outline the rules of procedures. For 30 minutes, citizens wishing to make comment who had completed a request to speak before and prior to the beginning of the meeting will be recognized by the Chair and then request to step to the microphone and make their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Members of the Board do not respond to public expressions during the public comment period. Public expression does not allow for comments on confidential or personnel matters. Speakers who wish to give materials to the Board will hand them to our clerk. The Chair will rule on all points during the public expression. Our first speaker tonight is Mayor Rick Coleman. He's not here. Okay. Monica Powell-Cubitt. Cindy Scruggs-Johnson. Amanda Merrick. Sorry about that, Amanda.
My name is Amanda Merrick. I live in Belmont, and I'm the mother of a second grader. I've been here before citing numbers and facts. I've given evidence and cited statistics. Now I'm here to make a passionate plea for you to reinstate the face mask policy. I have some questions for those of you that voted against requiring a mask. Why don't you trust the local public health director? Is the Gaston County Public Health Department not providing accurate information? Do you think health officials are just making these numbers up? Do you trust your own doctor? Would you follow his advice if he offered you a way to prevent getting sick? Or would you ignore it because nothing bad has happened to you so far, so you don't need the advice of someone who spent years in medical school? Please listen to the advice of the medical and health professionals. They know more than you do about community health issues. When they say a face mask is necessary, it's based on science and research. Don't let your own personal bias or opinions change your decisions on health matters. Or are you so terrified of not being reelected that you are willing to play Russian roulette with the county schoolchildren just so you can gain a few more votes? The mission statement for Gaston County Schools states, "Through outstanding employees and community partners, Gaston County Schools provides innovative educational opportunities for all students in a safe and nurturing learning environment." How can schools be safe if you aren't taking every precaution to keep kids healthy? How can schools be nurturing if students have health issues or loved ones with weakened immune systems, and they have to worry even more about COVID issues because you've eliminated a layer of protection that has been proven to reduce transmission? The local numbers keep getting worse, not better. This new variant is more contagious, not less. Are you ready to step into a teacher's shoes to be a substitute when they are quarantined? Would you feel comfortable spending the school day teaching in a classroom with 20 maskless kids? If you aren't willing to do that, why are you asking the teachers, staff, and students to do it? Think of your own children. If something, if you could do something to protect your child, wouldn't you do it? If a mask protects one child from being sick, isn't that worth it? Or is Gaston County Schools now a school system where only the very healthy and likely to survive can afford to attend? Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your comments and your continued concerns for Gaston County Schools. Although the Board does not typically respond during the period of public comments, we do want to hear from the public and direct staff to work on these issues that need to be addressed. Thank you again. The next item on the agenda is approval and correction amendments. And this is an action item, and I need a motion to approve the amendments for December 20th regular meeting. Mr. Dedman makes a motion. Does he have a second? Mr. Collier, any discussion? All in favor? And that's unanimous. The next item on the agenda allows for a report from our superintendent with a COVID update. Mr. Dr. Booker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Board. I would like first to introduce Steve Eaton, and he will give you the current data and trends in Gaston County. Mr. Eaton?
Great. Thank you very much. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Good afternoon, Chairman Ramsey, members of the School Board, and Dr. Booker. And again, thank you for having me this afternoon. So when we look at the summary of our key metrics, you'll see here that not only have we been trending away from the goal for the last two consecutive weeks, but what you can't see is we've been trending away from these, all these key metrics for the last four consecutive weeks. When we look at the daily new cases of COVID, you can see that we're currently far surpassing the highest peaks of the pandemic by leaps and bounds. The dramatic vertical acceleration of daily new cases is, I was trying to come up with a word, and I think the word is probably breathtaking. It is so much higher than what we've seen and has far surpassed every peak that we've had along the pandemic so far. Our positivity rate for Gaston County has also dramatically increased since the last time we met. At our last meeting, it was 12.7%, and currently it stands at 33.4%. Again, a high positivity rate such as this demonstrates a high level of community transmission. Gaston County is currently in the highest category of community transmission with a positivity rate that well exceeds the 26%. And I do want to highlight here that these percent positives have so much, have increased by so much that the state had to reset the levels. And again, Gaston County is far exceeding the highest category. Hospitalizations have also dramatically increased to the point that they too have also surpassed the highest peaks of the pandemic. Of those being hospitalized, national data has shown that over 80% are unvaccinated. And of those who are vaccinated, the majority of those have either not received their second dose or have not received their booster. This slide again shows you the three key areas overlaying each other. With Gaston's increase in daily cases and an increase in hospitalizations, we're now seeing an uptick in mortality. So you'll see that if you'll go back, I'm sorry, thank you. If you, you can see that we're not having as many deaths as we were earlier on, and this is due in large part to, to the Omicron variant not being as severe, but the transmissibility is, as we noted earlier, is putting many, many of our citizens in the hospital. And the long-term health impacts of that will not be known for a while. So let's now transition and take a look at school age data. This slide shows you the weekly number of COVID-positive cases in Gaston County for the 4- to 18-year-old population. As you can see, the number of new cases in the school age population has sharply increased over the last two weeks as the highly transmissible, transmissible Omicron variant has become dominant in our county, region, and across our state. The red trend line on this slide shows you the 4- to 18-year-old population as a percent of total county cases. The percent has actually decreased from 27% in November to currently a 12.55%. This slide shows you the number of student exposures and quarantines. Not surprisingly, with the high level of community transmission and nearly all Gaston County Schools and private schools moving to a mask optional policy, you can see the increase in exposures and quarantines as a result. On this slide, we have the staff positives and exposures on one slide. In green, you'll see the positive cases, and in gray, you'll see those who were exposed and had to quarantine. Again, you'll see a sharp increase over both the last two weeks. Gaston County continues to lag significantly behind the state with regards to vaccination among the 12- to 17-year-old population, as well as the 5- to 11-year-old population. In North Carolina, 43% of the 12- to 17-year-olds are fully vaccinated compared to 31% in Gaston County. And for the recently approved 5- to 11-year-old population, roughly 9% are fully vaccinated compared to 17% in North Carolina. This slide should also jump out at you. This month, you'll see that, that we have five children, pediatric cases, who are currently hospitalized, and we also had five in the month of December. When we look at last year at this time compared to where we are now, all of our metrics here are worse than we were last year. Last December, the 4- to 18-year-old population made up 11.29% of total positive cases in our county, and now they make up 12.55%. Our positivity rate last December was a little over 20%, and currently it stands at 33.4%. And the average daily hospital census in 2020 in January was 112, and currently that stands at 130. So public health recommendation for moving forward is to return to the strong schools, North Carolina Toolkit and Guidance, and reinstate the universal masking protocol. This recommendation is, again, based on the highly transmissible and dominant Omicron variant, which has led to our county's high positivity rate, its high daily number of new positives, and our surging hospital census. And again, a universal masking policy does not And again, a universal masking policy does keep the maximum number of children in the classroom and out of quarantine based on high levels of exposure. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Booker.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. And what I would ask is for Dr. Payne to come forward. And she is going to, at the last meeting, there were some questions about some of our data. Because as Mr. Eaton presents his data, that is the county data. It includes all schoolchildren that he works with, meaning the privates and public. So what Dr. Payne is going to do, we've tried to walk back from October and come forward so that she can get an idea on the data. So, Dr. Payne?
Good afternoon Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chair Cherry, Superintendent Booker, and members of the board. Tonight, I'd like to provide you with the COVID-19 data for Gaston County Schools and the updates from our Strong Schools Toolkit. I have several charts and graphs to provide you some real Gaston County student data. So we're going to look at a couple examples so that you'll better understand and be comfortable with the graph format that I've used. The first column in each one of the charts will be teal. And that is the number of students who are quarantined and isolated symptomatic. This includes students who are not able to come to school due to having symptoms or being in close contact to someone with COVID-19. Our middle chart, the dark teal, is the number of students who are exposed to a positive COVID case. A close contact is a student who's within six feet for 15 minutes or more to a positive COVID individual. This data does not include the vaccinated, positive within the last 90 days, and the mask-on-mask students as they are exempt from the quarantine guidance. And the third chart, or the third column in our chart, which is red, shows the students who were exposed and then became positive. In October, we see that we had a little over 2,900 students who were excluded from school due to quarantine isolation symptomatic. Of those roughly 2,900 students, 2,140 were exposed or a close contact. And 154 of the exposed tested positive. Now that we have looked at the data, I wanted to share with you and remind you of the procedures that we had in place during the month of October. We were a mask-mandated district where all students and staff were wearing a mask. We provide, we had procedures in place to provide students and staff multiple mitigation strategies to reduce the spread. For example, we were doing intense cleaning of our facilities, one-directional hallways, social distancing, and good hygiene practices such as our hand washing, coughing in our elbows, and other measures to mitigate the risk. Our toolkit in October allowed individuals who were mask-on-mask to be eligible to stay in school. It also required students who were a close contact to a positive case to be exposed, or to be quarantined for 10 days. And our symptomatic students had to isolate at home for 10 days. So everyone had to be at home for the 10 days. These students who were on quarantine or isolation were excluded from their extracurricular activities for the full 10 days. The board approved in October our partnership with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, which allowed us to open the Gaston County Testing Center on Garrison Boulevard. Since the opening, we have tested over 2,400 students. And they've had the opportunity to return to the instructional day. So thank you for doing that. Our November data, we had a little over 2,100 students who were quarantined or isolated symptomatic. With over seven, or 1,600 of those students identified as a close contact to a positive case. So 1,600 plus were exposures. And out of those exposures, 121 became positive during their quarantine time period. The procedures that we had in place beginning in November, again, we were mask mandated until November the 29th. In our November Board of Education meeting, you identified that beginning the 29th of November, we would launch our mask optional district, allowing our students and staff the opportunity to choose to be at school masked or unmasked. You also in our November board meeting approved the participation for test to stay. In partnership with ABC Collaborative, we were able to begin participating in the test to stay study, which allowed our students and employees the opportunity to test on day, these are our exposed students and employees, the opportunity to begin testing on day one, three, five, and seven, and return to school for the instructional day only with a negative result. The toolkit still provided mask-on-mask, the eligibility to be exempt from quarantine. And our quarantines still were excluded from our extracurricular for the full 10 days. In December, we were mask optional. Of the 3,000-plus students who were quarantined or isolated symptomatic, 2,800 individuals were identified as a close contact. And out of those exposures, 213 tested positive. Test to stay was expanded to our feeder testing sites. Students and employees were able to continue to test, that were exposed, were able to continue to test on day one, three, five, and seven. And the negative results allowed them to be eligible to return for the instructional day only. This, they, all quarantines were still excluded from extracurricular activities. We also had a requirement shift in the distancing that schools and districts were required to make from the toolkit. So it allowed us to start physical distancing, which was three feet instead of the social distancing of six feet. And beginning in December, individuals who were symptomatic were now eligible. So this started in December. They were now eligible to return with a negative antigen test. Prior to December, they had to have a PCR test. But beginning in December, they could return to school with a negative antigen test, which allowed them to test at our testing center. This chart shows the total number of student absences due to quarantine by month, with our highest month being in October. During the first four days of January, after returning from our break with some new guidance from the CDC and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, we've had over 1,400 quarantines, around 980 exposures, and 150 positives. And that's a fluid number as our data is still being entered. Test to stay allows our exposed individuals to return to school. The first column shows the number of students who were exposed. The second column is the number of students who participated in test to stay. And the third column is the number of students who are eligible to return to school. November had roughly 1,700 exposed students with 344 testing in test to stay and 339 being eligible to return to school. And you will see that's been consistent across the board. Individuals who were symptomatic were not eligible for antigen testing until December. So you will notice that we had 17 symptomatic students who tested in December. All 17 were eligible to return to school. In January, you'll notice that we have had more symptomatic students as that is a new process that students are eligible to come and test if they're symptomatic. So with that, we've had 246 symptomatic students test and 162 thus far have been eligible to return to school. This chart shows you the percentage of our quarantine-isolated that were exposures or close contacts. So 72% of our roughly 2,900-plus, 2,900-plus students in October were from exposure. We averaged 72 to 84% across the past four months of our quarantine-isolated symptomatic students being in exposure. And this chart will show you that of the 2,100 exposures in October, 9% tested positive. We had 8 to 9% average of our exposures test positive. And in the first four days of January, we had 16% of our exposed students test positive. To give you a summary, there is new guidance in test to stay from Strong Schools Toolkit. For districts who are test to stay and mask mandated, and I wanted to make you aware of that. It says, "Individuals in a mask-required school setting do not need to be excluded from school after a close contact, including unmasked exposures." So for example, during lunch, during extracurricular, if they're unmasked. If they have no symptoms. Individuals with unmasked exposures in a mask-required school setting should get tested on the notification of exposure and as close to the fifth day. So that's a new change for schools that are mask mandated and test to stay. Those students, if they, if they are in an unmasked exposure, so like lunch or any of those other times, they would only test on day one and day five and be eligible to return to school. They would be able to participate in all school activities. Yes, ma'am? So the, let me go back. The toolkit has new guidance from test to stay on districts who are mask mandated. That guidance is found on page 16 of the toolkit. And it says, "Individuals in a mask-required school setting do not need to be excluded from school after a close contact, including unmasked exposures." For example, lunch or extracurricular activities. If they have no symptoms, individuals with unmasked exposures in a mask-required school setting should get tested on the notification of exposure day and as close to day five after the exposure as possible. And then they must wear a mask in all school settings. So they would be eligible to return with a negative result on the notification day and on day five in a mask in all school settings. The takeaways? Test to stay provides our families the opportunity to reduce the number of days staff and students were out of school for quarantine. The toolkit has made some updates. It now reduces the isolation time from 10 days to five days as long as symptoms are improving. It allows mask optional students to participate in extracurricular activities after day, five days of quarantine as long as they are masked. So as long as we are a mask optional district, students are able to participate in extracurricular activities after the five days of quarantine. So when they return, as long as they're masked. The new toolkit update also allows mask mandatory districts to remain in school unless they are symptomatic or positive, including extracurricular.
I figured you had a question.
Of course I did. So, the, the, the test to stay, which we have been doing all along. And, and will have been involved in Dr. Benjamin's program, which has allowed us to have test to stay even as optional. And we're one of the few districts in the state that at present time are optional that have test to stay. So that puts us in a unique situation that other districts aren't in that are optional. Correct? Am I saying that right?
I'm assuming what you're saying, yeah, I don't know where you're going with it. So it depends on.
What I'm saying is that we have an extra piece that most optional districts do not have as far as being able to offer another layer of, of testing and, and options. I'm not saying it right either to, to our students and staff because of the program that we're in. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I hope they understood what I'm saying. Because in my mind, I know what I'm saying, it's just not coming out right. And I apologize. So I wanted to make that clear, that, that we are in a, in a good, good position about the test to stay program.
May I?
Yes, Ms. Catherine.
Clarify that for me, Dot.
No, I, I don't wish to clarify. I understand what you're saying. But I don't see how it's related to what we are about today. That, I understand the significance of showing how we have prepared our district and that we have layers in place. But right now, I do not understand how that's relevant to what we need to do.
I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on that. That's what I was trying to say.
It is an added layer.
What I was saying, that's what I wanted to make sure that I was correct. Go ahead, Dot, I'm sorry.
Well, is it time to talk?
Yeah, you can have questions.
Okay. I, you know, based on what I have heard from Mr. Eaton and based on what my research itself and based on your wonderful presentation, I, I do see an advantage here for us. And I see the advantage coming if we require masks. It would be to our advantage because our children are not going to have to stay out of school as long. And they won't be penalized as much as we had thought. And it's going to certainly provide some relief for our teachers who are in the classroom and need to make that interaction with those students. So I, I see this update as an advantage for us if we can look back at the mask and require, I don't, board members, colleagues, I don't care how long we, we do this, but I can see an advantage right now if we return to the mask mandate just for a short period of time.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Catherine. Ms. Lovelace, you have a comment?
No, I was just.
No, we're still doing presentations. Anybody else have any questions for Dr. Payne before we?
Or Eaton? Or Mr. Eaton?
Or Steve Eaton? The first thing I want to say, I know we've been asking, and Dr. Booker and Dr. Payne, we want to thank you for all this data because it helps us make decisions a lot better. And Steve Eaton, the overall, what the county's effect is too. So we're in a tough situation, we always know. But we'll try to do the best we can with the data we have and what's best for them. Okay, and I'm going to, you got any more to comment, Dr. Booker?
Yes, sir.
All right. The, the next item is one that will be on the agenda for every regular meeting for duration of this school year. By a new North Carolina law, all local Board of Education shall vote on the face covering policy every month and either maintain the current policy or amend it. Our current policy is that the masks are optional to Gaston County Public Schools by student, staff, and visitor of all campus.
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to make a motion, we stay the course and may, to allow masks optional.
Okay, masks optional. Okay. So, so I have a motion on the floor for staying this mask optional until the next board meeting, right? Okay. All right.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Davis. Now, so now we have a motion on the floor and a second. We can go to discussion. All right, Mr. Dedman?
I, I think we're making a mistake. I mean, if we don't listen to our health director, we probably need a new health director for our county. You know, it's overwhelming. We're not hurting anybody by wearing a mask. We're only helping our children and our teachers. We're only talking about another week and a half till we meet again. I think it's really important that we do go back to wearing a mask. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dedman. Ms., can she make a second motion? She has to. Yeah, that's what I was saying, I don't think I can take another.
That's still a discussion.
Yeah, we still have, you can have a discussion, but you can't put the motion until we vote on the first one, right? Is that correct, Mr.?
The original motion maker would have to agree to the.
Allow a subsidy.
So through discussion, if you want to amend your motion, you can. So.
Okay, I'll discuss.
Yeah. Ms. Lovelace?
If, if we, for the next two weeks, require that anyone in Gaston County Schools indoors wear a mask, this will allow students who are exposed to remain in school unless they are symptomatic or positive. My entire issue has been, for these past several months, is the number of students who are in quarantine. And as we could see, it's less than, it's about eight to nine percent of those students who have been in quarantine have actually tested positive. So all of those students have been out for basically no reason at all. They've just been in quarantine. been in quarantine. So this way, if we could, board members, uh, put our kids back in mask and, and anyone indoors, and, and I would say that would be excluding extracurricular activities, and that also is the athletes while in play and the fine arts performances, but just do this while indoors for two weeks, and let's see what our numbers look like.
Yes, Ms. Guthrie. Thank you, Ms. Lovelace.
I agree, and I wanted to just say that I personally don't want to be a wait-and-see school board member. I want to look at the facts, I want to hear the facts, rather, and I want to provide some action based on what we have heard from the experts. I am not, and I don't believe that our situation will allow us to compare ourselves with any other school district. We are looking at Gaston County, and I see for myself, and I've heard about the numbers, we even saw, or I even read that Gaston College students, as I stated, we don't compare ourselves to others, but Gaston College is requiring that their students wear masks. And we are here, and we want our children to be in school. It is a wear and tear on families, it is a wear and tear on school administrators, on teachers, on students, it's a wear and tear on bus drivers, the transportation that's trying to get our children to and from school. We have not looked at the whole picture the way that we ought to. I know that we haven't all been in the school environment, it's different. Dr. Booker shared good news with us earlier. We sit and we applaud at all of the good news that we hear that's happening within our school environment or on the campuses. That's what we like to hear from the superintendent. But then we get primary information, and we get data from, uh, October or whenever it was collected and compiled. Those are facts, we are not in a library where there's fact and fiction. Facts. All that we are asking right now is, and board members, you know yourself, that I will go along with what I believe to be right. We voted in the fall, I voted because it was from my heart. All that we're asking right now is that you consider, just for two weeks, we're going to be meeting again, they are still collecting data, and that will be reflected. That's all that we're asking for. If you tell me that there's an accident on I-85, I'm not gonna go I-85, I'm gonna try to find a better route. Well, we know that there's, we have some problems and concerns right now. Why can't we try a different route for just two weeks? That's all that we're asking for. We are all in this together. Last December, we all took an oath to protect our children as best as we could, and now we are changing. That's all, we're asking for two weeks. Let us look at the data for two weeks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Anybody else have any more discussion or comments?
Chairman Ramsey, I would just like to say thank you to Dr. Guthrie for the things that she had to say.
We're just asking for two weeks.
Y'all ready to vote? You got any more questions, Dr. Payne, Steve Eaton, or Dr. Booker? Y'all good? All right. All in favor for the motion? All against? It's four, three.
I'm not gonna vote, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, it would be a tie without Mr. Hall.
I go as the tallest people.
You would win, that's for sure. So thank y'all for all the information, and all our board members. We're in a tough situation, we know it, we try to do the best we can.
Oh, no, we're not.
Well, Ms. Guthrie, I-
Oh, I'm out of order, I'm sorry.
Yes, you are, and, uh-
I'm sorry. But we're not doing the best that we can, because we have data.
Yes, I know, but we gotta respect each other, and that's what we're here for, even we disagree and agree. So, let me move on to the mask.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
And this may be one that we will ask of the superintendent or your cabinet. We know now that the masks will remain optional. There is money for COVID, right?
There has been money allocated, yes, ma'am, and we've budgeted all that and had those budgets approved by the state.
Okay, so I want to ask this. If we know that our teachers are going to remain in a position, and our children are going to be, uh, remain in a position, and we know that right now, um, some of the recommendations are that you wear, uh, masks that are N-95, so I'm asking, is there a way for our teachers, since they are considered essential workers, is there a way for the schools to have those N-95 masks for teachers to wear?
Ms. Guthrie, uh, with the updated toolkit, the governor allocated that school systems could request N-95s, we have already submitted our request-
Okay.
-or asked that. We do have literally thousands of various styles of mask available. One that you are wearing is a KN, and we have those available-
Mm-hmm.
-if teachers would request those, because we, we can secure those. The N-95s are still, uh, coming from the governor. So we do have all those supplies our schools can request and have them, they are available in stock, we're not waiting for any.
Thank you, and, and I meant KN-95-
Yes, ma'am.
-because that's what I am wearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, but, uh, thank you, sir.
Uh, Mr. Collier?
Uh, to further follow Ms. Guthrie's questioning, are, are those available to students for parents who would, uh, like that available for their students, I mean, for their children?
I would have to check on our quantities. We have secured enough for our faculty, for, in, in the teaching, the ones that were supplied by the state for students were initially cloth, and then the one like you have on, what some call a, a medical mask, is what we have available as well. And it varies from site to site, because some schools have purchased their own with their own logos and things, but if there's a specific request, we try to address that request.
Well, I, I agree with Ms. Guthrie, that, um, uh, you know, there is recommendations that the N-95 is basically the one that's effective.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and of course, you know, there's, there's other things that go along with that, is wearing it properly and fitting properly, there's a lot to wearing a mask, and that, uh, it's just impossible, uh, for us to, um, police, uh, as, with children. But that said, if parents, uh, have the opportunity for the best protection possible, I, you know, I would encourage them to do so. Um, and though I'm supporting optional, I do think that parents and everybody who want a mask should have the best option available to them, and especially our staff, I think they should, and if there's any way we can facilitate that for children too, I would be in support of that.
And, and you have already, uh, highlighted one of the challenges with the N-95, that's a more professional fitting and, and various things, so, but we, we'll have the KN-95s available for folks as they request.
All right, thank you, Ms. Co.
May I ask one more question?
Yes, Ms.
I've gotta get this out.
Okay.
Um, Ms. Payne, did you, Dr. Payne, did you mention One Direction on hallways, is that still, uh, go in?
The schools, she was referencing the various methods that have been used, and in schools, some are still maintaining that, some have, have gone back to the more traditional operation.
I see, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Uh, this item will be reconsidered on our next board meeting, February 21st, in accordance with North Carolina law, Senate Bill 654. The next item on the agenda is-
Mr. Chairman, if, if, if something else happens, I hope it doesn't get any worse, but can we not discuss this at our next official board meeting?
We'll, we'll, we'll have a retreat, but yeah, anytime.
Well, I mean, we're gonna have a board meeting at a retreat, aren't we?
Uh, we won't need one. I only feel we need one, but we don't have one scheduled.
It's a pleasure.
Right. Yeah, it's a pleasure. Yeah, well, you can have an emergency meeting anytime. Yeah. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is acceptance of June the 30th, 2021 compliance report, this is an action item, Gary Hoskins.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chair Cherry, members of the board, Superintendent Booker. Uh, last month, we had Vince Quinn, our auditor from Anderson Smith &amp; White, present to you our annual financial statements, uh, which they audited. As a part of that review, they also presented a compliance report, and that's what, um, I have here, uh, for your review and acceptance today. Uh, this is the compliance report for the year ended June 30, 2021. And if you'll recall, we just really did June 30, 2020, several months ago, so this is the typical time of the year that we do this. So the primary focus of this report is, number one, to, uh, prepare or present a report of internal control over the financial statements, which is not, which this internal control report is not audited, and also to provide a compliance, a report on compliance requirements with major federal programs, and a report on compliance with major state programs. So on page one, uh, is the, uh, report on internal control. As I mentioned, this is not an audit, uh, this is just a report, so they do not issue an opinion. However, based on the limited items that they looked at, they did not find any material weaknesses or deficiencies. The second item they looked at, o-on page three, is the report on compliance with major federal programs, that'll be like Title I, school nutrition, et cetera. Uh, they did do sufficient, uh, review on this to provide an opinion. Uh, they included examining evidence of our compliance with these requirements and performing other procedures necessary to issue an opinion, and that opinion is on page four. And in their opinion, of the auditors, Gaston County Board of Education complied in all material respects with the types of compliance reports, requirements for federal programs. The same thing on page six was a report, report on compliance with major state programs, us positions, months, and money, uh, used for teachers, principals, et cetera. And again, they did do sufficient, uh, testing to present a, uh, a opinion, and on page seven, uh, it is their opinion that, uh, we complied in all material respects, uh, with regard to state, compliance with state programs. The only finding that they had is on page 12. This is a finding that, uh, we have in these reports quite often, uh, and that criteria is that the school system exceeded the positions or months of employment allotted by DPI. So in this instance, uh, we received 12,124, uh, teaching allotments, uh, for months, and we exceeded that by 6.7 months, and for instructional support, uh, 1,205 was exceeded by 1.09. So that comes to a total of $41,112. Uh, those funds were remitted back to the state, uh, and last year, that amount was about $42,000, so very consistent with last year, so.
And Mr. Hoskins won't take credit for this, but remembering, if we come up short, we don't get the money we didn't spend, so-
Right.
-managing it that close shows the-
Yeah.
-structure he has in place for management.
There are no refunds if we don't use the, the money that they provide us, that's correct. So we ask that you accept this report, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Yeah. Mr. Collier?
I'll make, uh, it's just an action item?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the report, and then I have a question.
Okay.
Go ahead, Brent.
All right. Uh, Mr. Collier makes a motion to accept, and Brent Moore second. And any discussion?
He's got a question.
Yes, Mr. Collier.
Mr. Hoskins, on that exception on page 12, I just want to be clear to, uh, folks that, uh, it's always best to err excessively with that number, because we've underfunded teachers if we are under.
Right.
Um, if we have an unfavorable variance, and that $41,000 is in relation to how, what total budget from the state for teachers?
Uh, for teachers, 85, 90 million, something like that.
Okay, so that's, that's hardly a, um, yeah, it's, it's hardly a part of a percent in comparison to that kind of budget number, so that's a job-
Yes, sir.
-well done. I'm just trying to get you to, uh, say those numbers out loud, so everybody can hear how well a job that is to manage it that close.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments before we vote? Ms. Lovelace?
I would like to make a comment, this may be, uh, out of line, but it says the cause is the oversight on part of board personnel. Really?
Yes.
Thank you.
They, they will write us a letter, and it'll be a nasty letter, and we'll say, you know, we're gonna try to do better, and we do try to do better, we try to get closer to zero.
I know.
Um, you know, sometimes things are moving, especially at the end of the year, between state, federal, and local money. Uh, Delane Loftus does a wonderful job, uh, managing this process, and to Mr. Collier's point, 1.09 out of 1,205, uh, positions is about as close as you can get to zero.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Hoskins. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Next on the, item on the agenda is consent agenda. There are several items on the consent agenda tonight, please take a look at those items. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Ms., uh, Ms. Cherry, I'll say it, uh, Ms. Cherry made the motion second by Mr. Moore. Any discussions? All in favor? And that's unanimous. This brings us time to our meeting here from our superintendent, Dr. Booker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, several items to highlight today. Uh, you should have at your desk or seat one of the storybooks, and these are hot off the press and are being distributed now, and I want to thank the Communications Department, particularly Mr. Hagens, for his leadership, for producing this and publishing the stories that are going on in our school system. It's a great glossy publication for everyone to enjoy. I want to thank all of our employees, particularly right now, our classified employees for their patience. As you all know, there's the school business modernization program that was put in place by the General Assembly, and we are one of the leading candidates in that, because we had school business systems that were 30 years or more older, and today was the first payroll for our classified employees under the new system. And so our HR specialists and our payroll specialists have been working overtime, but it still has to work a lot with the employees, because if they've changed a bank account, if they've had a, a change in job responsibilities, meaning the, the number of hours they work with, their payroll could be in flux. So a lot of calls today and a lot of questions with this first payroll, but I appreciate their patience and, and the work that they've done. And in particular, I don't know that Ashley Duckworth and Gina Waters have sleep, slept any since, uh, the holidays, but the work they've done, I've been getting emails from them seven days a week, and so I really appreciate all the team's work, but those two in particular, numerous school-based employees have had to work to help with this, but we are making progress, and two months from now, everybody will wonder how we ever did it before with the system, so thanks to everyone, and there are still some folks out there that the pay not be exactly right, they are working and will get it rectified very quickly on that. So I just wanted to publicly talk about that, so everybody knows that, that it's being worked on very hardly. Um, you hopefully have seen some billboards up around town about school choice, and the beginning of, of that at the end of the month- beginning of that at the end of the month, as far as opening up the website for selections. But we're also going to have a school choice fair on January 22nd at the Gaston Antonio Conference Center, and it's an opportunity where people can come and see the schools and meet with representatives from the school and talk about the various choice programs and understand what it is. Remembering that we have six academy areas that focus on careers, college prep, health sciences. I was in a meeting today with Dr. Thier Folder and Dr. Hoosier, Belmont Abbey, and Gaston College, talking about just the dynamic things that are going on in healthcare at both of their institutions, building off of our health sciences programs, the Leadership Academy, Public Service Academy, Technology and Industrial Engineering. So the choice fair is free to attend, and a lot of times, there's fun things going on there in addition to the information that is given. So I encourage everyone to do that. Also, that weekend, we'll be having our science fair, and so I encourage those. Great participation. We want to thank Duke Energy for being our significant sponsor. They really stepped up to help make that event continue to be a premier event in our community. Hopefully, you've seen on Channel 21 some of our marching band fanfare programs. This was a real effort of our Communications Department where, when the marching band fanfare was held, they recorded the performances and have created two television programs to express how the quality of our band program. And so a real thank you to the parents that support those programs, the booster programs related to them, all the students, the directors. Gosh, those directors go well beyond what you know to make those programs be the quality that they are. So thank you to everyone for that. And then finally, I want to acknowledge Martin Luther King Holiday, and that means for us, no school and students, but it also means a dynamic point in our country and a great step forward. So we want to acknowledge that and appreciate all the festivities that are going. Unfortunately, with the storm that is on our way, there is a lot of weather that could hinder some of those celebrations. Also, we will be watching closely. If the weather and the temperatures hold, we may have some challenges with Tuesday and the operations of schools. And so we would do our traditional communication methods. We use our app as the fastest place it will come out, and it'll be posted on the website as well as the robo-calls will go out from the district. Mr. Chairman, that is my report. We do need a closed session for both personnel and legal matters. Please.
Yes, Mr. Dedman?
Yes, sir.
We are going to notify, through our normal way, all the parents about their meeting on the 22nd at the convention center. I mean, principals will send something.
Yeah, we are publicizing. You're talking about the choice option. Yes, sir. Yeah, we will encourage folks to be placing in their Sunday calls to their students. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Booker, and thank you for your time and attention. We have work. What's best for our students, teachers, and community. We look forward to our next scheduled meeting, which is currently scheduled for February 21st, 2022. And for us, for a closed session, we have another birthday girl, and her name's Ms. Dot Guthrie, January 18th. I know. But I need a motion for closed session.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 11, paragraph A6 for personnel, and under the same statute, paragraph A3 for consultation with attorney and any other legal matters.
All right, now have a second. Mr. Davis, second. Any questions? All in favor? That's unanimous. We're in closed session.